For the Pledge of Allegiance and then observe a moment of silence. Madam Clerk, could you please call the roll?
Councilmember Bowlin.
Here.
Councilmember Motney.
Here.
Councilmember Eming.
Present.
Councilmember Becker.
Here.
Councilmember Correa. Councilmember Ward.
Here.
Councilmember Crable.
Here.
Councilmember Crumpler.
Here.
Mayor Melo Wambwe.
Here. So I understand Councilmember Correa is trying to join remotely, correct? Are we able to?
That is correct. Yeah, so we are trying to have her join via Zoom. She's out due to illness, which is a reason under our code. But we haven't been successful to get her yet. At which point we do, we will take a vote for her to participate remotely. And then from that point forward, she would be able to participate by phone.
Sounds good. Well, maybe that was her calling one of the... Okay, sounds good. We'll go ahead and do that. So next item on the agenda is recognition and appointments. And we do have a proclamation recognizing National Farmers Week for the week of August 1st to August 7th, 2021, as requested by the Administration Department. So I am going to go ahead and read the proclamation. And I do believe we have Catherine Dunlab from our Economic Development Department, as well as, is Samantha here? Okay, okay, all right. Awesome. Who, by the way, did a fantastic job this Saturday at Saturday on the Square. Awesome job. I was there, it was a lot of fun. So... Okay. So she, Councilmember Correa is on speakerphone right now. Do we need to do this right now? Just, yeah.
Sorry. Yes, we do. So if she's on...
It's just a motion?
Yeah, if we could just have the motion and then continue.
Okay. Can I have a motion to allow Councilmember Correa to participate remotely?
So moved.
Okay, moved by Councilmember Crable. Second, not at once. Okay, second by Councilmember Eming. Madam Clerk, could you please call the roll?
Councilmember Bowlin.
Yes.
Councilmember Motney.
Yes.
Councilmember Eming.
Yes.
Councilmember Becker.
Yes.
Councilmember Ward.
Aye.
Councilmember Crable.
Yes.
Councilmember Crumpler.
Yes.
Okay, thank you. This passes, no names to announce. So back to National Farmers Week. Whereas Bloomington, Illinois, whereas Bloomington, Illinois farmers and ranchers provide people with access to healthful, locally and regionally produced foods through farmers' markets, which are expanding and evolving to accommodate the demand for a diverse array of agricultural products. And whereas farmers' markets and other agricultural direct marketing outlets provide infrastructure to assist in the distribution of farm and value-added products, thereby contributing approximately $9 billion each year to the US economy. And whereas farmers' markets serve as significant outlets by which small to medium, new and beginning, and veteran agricultural producers market agricultural products, generating revenue that supports the sustainability of family farms and revitalization of rural communities nationwide. And whereas the city recognizes the importance of expanding agricultural marketing opportunities that assist and encourage the next generation of farmers and ranchers, generate farm income to help stimulate business development and job creation, build community connections through rural and urban linkages and more. And whereas the farmers' market makes fresh, healthy, local foods more accessible for all people in the community by accepting Link EBT and doubling the value of dollars spent on produce through Link Up Illinois grant funding. Therefore, be it resolved that I, Mboke Malambwe, Mayor of the City of Bloomington, do hereby proclaim August 1st through 17th, 2021 as National Farmers Market Week in the City of Bloomington and commend its observance to all people. That's it, thank you. Thought there was more. Thank you so much. You guys have done a really good job with the farmers' market and many of the events in downtown. So really appreciate your work also. Let's give them a round of applause. Okay. Next item on the agenda is public comment. Madam Clerk, do we have anybody signed up for public comment?
We do. We have four people in person. And then we also received two emailed public comments, which were provided to council earlier today. Those were from Janay Clark and Ee Banyai. And the first one for public comment today will be Matthew Tosco.
Okay. Public comment is an opportunity for speakers to provide their views and feedback to the city council. It is also an opportunity for the city council to listen and hear diverse points of view. To maximize the impact of public comment and show respect for the expression of all views, speakers should maintain civility and focus on city issues. Speakers must identify themselves for the record, but are not required to give their address. Each speaker is given the floor for three minutes, and the council does not respond or engage in debate. Any speaker that engages in threatening and disorderly behavior will be deemed out of order and their time ceases. So Matthew, you may step forward. Thank you.
Well, good afternoon. I'm Matt Tosco. I live here in Bloomington. It's come to my attention that current city government rules pertaining to elected city council members are set up to allow for the whims of landlords and other tragedies to subvert the democratic will of the voters in Bloomington's wards. This strikes at the very heart of local democracy and needs to be fixed immediately. If a person is elected by the voters in their ward, but has to move outside their ward because of eviction, denial of lease renewal, residence fire, flooding, domestic events, et cetera, because of the way the current rules are worded, they have to resign their seat on the council? I believe in the ward system, and the candidates for the positions should have to live in the ward they are running in. But having to unexpectedly move across town should not disqualify them from representing that ward after having been duly elected by that ward's voting residents. I feel that the requirement that a candidate has resided in the ward they run to represent for a year prior to the election, and the qualifier that the councilperson did not make a choice to move outside of their ward, the upheaval occurred from outside of their control, are sufficient to keep the system honest. What is not honest is robbing people of their electric representation because of capitalist whims and/or unforeseeable tragedy. Not supporting a common sense fix to how things are currently handled is tantamount to openly declaring that you support current machinations that allow for landlords to overturn the will of the voters, to overturn local elections, and to subvert our democracy. That isn't right. Without supposing or figuring that there was any conspiracy or deliberate things happening in recent events regarding this issue, the very fact that this is possible needs to be fixed. And I do call upon this council to do what they need to do to rewrite these rules to better protect our democracy. Thank you.
Thank you, Matthew. Next.
Next up, we have Tate Skinner.
Hello, councilpeople. I'm Tate Skinner, and I live here in Bloomington Normal. And I'm in part in here, in part here with the Bloomington Normal Tenants Union. And it has come to our attention that there are flaws in our city council rules, specifically a flaw that allows for the overruling of democracy in the event that someone may lose their home. Now, we all know that tragedies happen, house fires, flooding, evictions, and so on. And I'm sure that nobody would want to lose their representative over something unforeseeable as one of these events. And I'm here to call on you as elected representatives to stand up for democracy here in Bloomington and to change these rules. I urge you to make an exception for anyone who loses residence in their ward due to unforeseen circumstances and to strengthen our democracy by getting rid of this flaw. Thank you.
Thank you, Tate.
Next up is Gary Donahue.
Good evening. Thank you for this opportunity. I am Gary Donahue. Patty Spencer and I live in East Gate in the 8th Ward at 2304 East Jackson Street, where the human waste sewage and the runoff rainwater is combined in one line by the city. I'd like to thank Jeff Crable, who met with a lot of our neighbors on Saturday morning, July 10th, at Winnie Gant's home to help get the ball rolling. This is our third Monday standing in front of the council. And Winnie is actually with us today and has suffered a major financial loss, not unlike many here in East Gate. Judy Davenport is here tonight, and she will finally have the Baptist Organization in her home tomorrow, a month later, to finally dig out and disinfect her home. Patty Spencer can't be here tonight, but asked me to mention that water, sanitation, and hygiene on a global level are basic human rights and supported by the bill in Melinda Gates Foundation, especially as it pertains to gender equality outcomes for the world's people. There's really nothing equitable about the outcome from the City of Bloomington Combined Sewage System. This labyrinth covers 29 miles in our residential neighborhood and deals out a harsh and unfair outcome for the women who live here. Many, like Diane Wustoff and Darlene Weber, have seen the same sewage invasion outcome for decades, over and over and over again. Our neighbor Kurt Hudson wrote earlier this weekend some very powerful words that I wish to repeat for you here in this meeting. Everyone from East Gate encourages the council to continue their progress from the last two weeks' meetings. We look forward to hearing the 30 minutes of presentation and discussion that are carved out for the storm on the agenda tonight. Thank you for embracing this issue. We are encouraged by the questions, discussions, and possible solutions we heard from council during last week's meeting. We are specifically encouraged by learning last week that during Phase 1 of the Locust Colton Project, the scope was expanded in the 11th hour to add components from subsequent phases. Well, this lets us know that changing the plan and moving quickly are completely possible. Kurt gets it, and we thank him for his guidance and leadership. Thank you for showing your leadership as a council member.
Thank you, Gary. Next.
Last up, we have Wilma Stigey.
Thank you, Mayor and Council. I'm Wilma Stigey. I live at 2204 East Jackson Street. I'd like to talk to you about something a little different. The water sewer water backup has been horrible for our neighborhood, for everyone, but especially for East Gate. As you can see, a majority of us are senior citizens, which makes this a living nightmare for us. I'm 76 years young, a widow, living alone, as are many of my wonderful neighbors. Imagine the hardships this is for us. What if this were your parents or your grandparents? We live on a fixed income. And what savings we have should not be spent on fixing sewer water backups. This is the city's job. This is your job to see that it gets done. And we're here begging you, begging you to do your job. Thank you all, and may God bless you all.
Thank you, Wilma. Okay, so that concludes it, everybody? Okay, thank you. So the next item on the agenda is the consent agenda. Are there any items on the consent agenda that members of the council would like to see removed? Okay, Councilmember Bowlin?
Yes, 7H.
7H.
7D as in David, 7E as well.
Okay. Okay, is there a motion to approve the consent agenda, except for items 7H, 7D, and 7E?
I will make that motion.
Okay, motion by Councilmember Bowlin?
Second.
Okay, second by Councilmember Eming. Madam Clerk, could you please call the roll?
Councilmember Bowlin.
Yes.
Councilmember Motney.
Yes.
Councilmember Eming.
Yes.
Councilmember Becker.
Yes.
Councilmember Correa.
There we go, Jen.
Oh, yes. Thank you. Councilmember Ward.
Aye.
Councilmember Crable.
Yes.
Councilmember Crumpler.
Yes.
Okay, thank you. The consent agenda passes, except for items 7H, 7D, 7E. And now we're going to take them in the order that they were pulled, and Councilmember Bowlin?
Yes, I would like to make a motion to accept the plan as presented, with the exception of the additional parking spaces over and above the maximum.
Okay. Is there a second? To that motion?
I'll second.
All right. Seconded by Councilmember Motney, sorry.
Yeah, I did this for some discussion. We have zoning ordinances, you know, for reason. We have a minimum for parking and a maximum for parking. And given what happened over the past month with flooding, including surface flooding, I have a real concern about increasing impermeable areas that will have a negative effect on our storm sewer infrastructure. If, in fact, there is, you know, serious rain coming sometime down Pike. I would like to open this for discussion to see what the other council members have to say. But from my personal feeling, the maximum should be adequate for that particular location and that particular business.
Okay, sounds good. Are there others who'd like to speak to this issue?
Do we know from staff whether the additional parking will create surface water-type problems that could impact the system? Or are we just kind of, I guess, expecting that? Or is that something we know from staff?
Well, I did not ask staff that specific question, but it is fact that if you take away grass or green space, there will be more runoff that will have to go into the sewer system versus being absorbed into the ground. And that, that's the whole idea behind detention basins, where, you know, the runoff water will go down into a detention basin and soak into the ground. So, you know, that's what I'm basing my opinion on, as far as the flooding goes.
And Mayor, if I just, I don't know if you mentioned this, Donna, but this, I mean, I guess recently the Planning Commission, not Planning Commission, but there was parking maximums put in place, correct? And so, so basically, this is asking to exceed that amount. And you're just asking it to go back to what it would be under the standard?
Yes, I wanted to stay no more than the maximum. The Panda Express Company is asking for, well, it's a 25% increase. However, that's, you know, five, six, seven, eight extra spots. But I think that that's significant enough to create an issue. The Planning Commission did say they had some concern about parking in the neighborhood. But with peak hours at lunchtime and dinnertime, I'm not sure having, you know, an empty parking lot with all these extra spaces would be valuable. But it's up to the council to decide.
And I have another issue on the project. Whenever, I don't know, I don't want to interrupt this issue, but...
I have a question for clarification. If, so the plat, the asphalt would need to be constructed to include that additional? In other words, where there is no, where there is not cement now, there will be cement in the future if these five additional spaces were allowed? And you may not know that detail.
Are you referring to the current cement slab that's...
Yes.
Well, I don't know for sure. Staff would have to, you know, ask the company. But from, from my observation, that slab is not in very good condition. And the building itself would have to take up part of the property.
Sure.
And probably new parking spots would have to be put in. So I'm, I'm thinking, unless staff can correct me, that the whole piece of property will be have to be redesigned and set up to include drive-through parking in the building.
Right. I was just wondering, I hadn't thought of that. I was persuaded by one of the members of the Planning Commission's argument against adding these five extra parking spaces, more as a matter of principle, that it was an unnecessary overage, and why, you know, begin to move the line a little bit in this way, given that we really do want to try to control the cement that we're adding to the built environment as much as possible. So I agree with you. Okay, thank you.
Okay, sounds good. City manager, listen.
Thank you, Mayor, for the chance to hop in here. We actually are fortunate to have the number one and number two of the Economic Community Development Department, Melissa and Kimberly. Is there anything to add that we can assist council with at this time? And then also, I guess I'm curious, was this an ask made by the developer where this is a condition for them to develop? But if you don't mind speaking to that, Melissa.
Sure, absolutely. As far as the detention, I mean, they'd have to provide detention for the amount of parking lot that they're putting in. So that would be accounted for in their development. This would be all new development, so they would not be using, you know, what's on the site. And this was a request of the developer due to the demand that they're seeing for this restaurant in order to provide adequate parking for people coming off the interstate and visiting their restaurant.
Sounds good. Okay, Councilmember.
Yeah, while we're on this subject and while you're here, I guess a couple of questions that I have, have. If the request is not granted, the slab, the current space is in pretty poor condition, would that still be rehabilitated somehow? Would it, or is it going to just be left to look the way it looks right now? I'm concerned as well about the aesthetics of it. If it's not a new parking state, you know, new parking spaces, what will it be? Do, are you even able to...
Yeah, I can't really speak to that because it would depend on whether or not they would move forward with the development.
So is that to say that the, the project might be in jeopardy if, if they don't get these parking spaces?
I mean, I can't really speak to that right now. I'd have to, I'd have to reach out and see.
Yeah. And in terms of the impact on the neighborhood and the parking, because I want to, you know, I'm quite, quite aware and concerned about, you know, water runoff and, and that, that's a very big deal in Ward 7. So I don't want to add to that. But I'm hearing you say that, that that would be accounted for in, in this project, the way it's currently being requested. What I'm not hearing is an answer about what would be the impact on the neighborhood in terms of the parking. And that's something that's relevant as well. You know, in terms of people being able to get around, safety questions, people's, just being able to find a parking space. So are you able to speak to that if, if they weren't granted this?
Well, to my, to my knowledge, and Kimberly, correct me if I'm wrong, there's no on-street parking at this location. I mean, it would be all within the parking lot.
Not in the neighborhoods?
No, there's no surrounding residential.
Because that was the issue that was raised at the, in the, on the agenda of the Planning Commission, I guess it was. Am I looking at the right meeting here? In any event, that was one of the issues that was raised, was, was parking in the neighborhood. So you're saying that that's not an issue?
There's going to be, yeah, no ability for, for on-street parking there also at that location. Yeah. Thank you.
Councilmember Crable?
Okay, this, okay to go to a different subject on this project?
I just want one more clarification because I is it, what I'm hearing is you don't know if Panda Express will pull out of this plan? If we don't allow the additional parking? Or you just, you don't know the answer to that?
I can't respond to that. Okay. Yeah. Yeah, I, you know, I think their, their response into the, the parking study that, that the Planning Commission had determined that they could move forward without having that after hearing the testimony. So they did move forward without conditions. The developer was able to provide a response to the parking demand study. And they did indicate that the 65 standard parking stalls with the three accessible spaces would meet their, what they would be looking for during their peak times. And I believe this is six or five higher than the 660 that would be the, or the maximum.
Well, I did, I did request that information. I got the letter and I, I read it. And they used Joliet as a reference. Is there a reason why they didn't use the Panda, local Panda Express? Because Joliet's population is like three times Bloomington. And I'm not trying to be a stickler here. I'm just, you know, just have concerns. And I wanted to have the conversation.
So the original comparison that they gave us was strictly Joliet. And that's why we essentially rejected that for the first go-around. Through the, the testimony and during the, at the Plan Commission and looking at the code, the Plan Commission felt that the, the standards were met. The code uses words like "they may require a parking demand study." So what they did, so essentially, the, the Plan Commission removed the requirement to follow up with the, the demand study. However, essentially, as a courtesy, they offered, they still went ahead and did that. So they took what, what they had determined from that Joliet store and then sort of mixed it in with the, the other requirements that... And then sort of mixed it in with the, the other requirements that are, their standards that are suggested to be used by the ordinance. In particular, there's a, a traffic manual, the ITE, it's an engineering standards. And then there's another one, ULI, Urban Land Institute. Which I do not believe that they use, but it was not a, a requirement. And they sort of. Put that in the mix with this location. You know, the other Panda Expresses, this is a little bit different of a location. It's a highway stop essentially. I mean, it's a, it's a far. Much more vehicle oriented, but it's, but they are anticipating people to come in. I mean, they have a, as you read and hit, they have a line, you know, 30% of transactions happened through the drive-through. That could be 65 transactions to happen through the store. This was based on a 6:30 to 7:30 PM study and sort of a snapshot that they had looked at. So by their estimation, this works, you know, a lot, a lot of things are geared towards peak times. And in a situation like this, what they were trying to say is, and if there's overflow. Where does that overflow go? And it's an art, it's a major arterial, where do they back into? So they wanted to be able to accommodate for that.
Well. I mean, I understand. I understand all of that. But again, if we start setting a precedent. Where we will go over the maximum to accommodate an hour at lunch and an hour at dinner. I'm not saying that I would support that. I think we have the maximum and it may or may not accommodate. But if it's the maximum, it should accommodate. What is the seating capacity in there?
I am not sure I know offhand.
You don't know, okay. Because that also would, if it's primarily a drive-through. Then, you know, the cars would go in, get their order and move on. But if there's significant seating, then parking would be more of an issue.
Have to get you the speeding number, we don't have that.
Okay.
They're estimating 30% would be through the drive-through.
30% of the revenue, okay. Okay. That's from the drive-through, but it could also be people just parking, getting carry out and leaving. Okay, okay, thank you.
Okay. Let's see. Is this on the same, same topic or I know Councilmember Crebo wanted to move on to something different?
I was going to propose a possible tabling of this until we get some of those questions answered. I don't know if you, how, what you would think about that. Alderwoman Bolin.
Maybe since, you know, some of the questions have not been answered.
Okay, all right.
Hi, my name's Abby Ehrler. I'm a project manager for Clover Architects. Been working on this project quite a few years, so I'd like to think I'm, should be able to answer a few of your questions here. I guess I can start with the, the runoff. I can get you exact numbers on that, but there will be less impervious space. We left a good portion of the area to the north completely pervious. And so we have submitted to the Bloomington Normal Water Reclamation District as well as Engineering Public Works of the City. And have received all our approvals there, so they have not seen any issues with our runoff. Believe our civil is utilizing a riprap system draining using the creek nearby. So that shouldn't be an issue. Seating Panda is going through some changes on their interior, but usually it's about 60 seats, give or take. We'll see what happens. I think right now it's at about 68. It could come down. They're kind of reworking their focus on their interior seats. And I think a big part of having those extra parking stalls is due to the no overflow. And also, it's not unheard of to think of at this location that there could be larger vehicles. There could be RVs, there could be trucks with trailers that are taking up more than one parking stall at any given time. So that's kind of our thought process and getting a few of these extras. And I don't know if you're all familiar with the plan, but it could have, it could have been larger. And we did try to scale it back to what would be necessary for this site and the store. And another reason why the other Panda Express in town wasn't used is because that one is not a drive-through. So we really wanted to make sure that we're using comparable numbers here. So if you have any questions, I'd be happy to try to answer them for you.
That's good. Does, okay, you have a question?
Not a question for you, I just want to summarize where we're at. Your initial concern was the drainage. That concern's been answered. Your secondary concern was, are we bending rules that's going to cause, set a precedent? To me, it's a very small thing. We're bending a rule, but there is. There has been demonstrated mitigation for the main concern. And we have somebody willing to develop a location that is very tough to get developed. That could be very advantageous to them because of the location with the highway. It feels to me like the concern's been answered on this one and we should probably move to Jeff's rather than tabling this. Just my opinion.
Sounds good. Let's hear from Jeff before we get ready to vote, I guess. Yeah. Sure. Okay, sounds good. Thank you. Okay, do you, Councilmember Bolin, would you like to move forward with your motion? Or do you want to withdraw your motion?
I'm going to throw this question now that we have the experts standing. No offense, but what is it, the project manager? Would the project fall through if? We've just stayed at the maximum level?
Um, I think. I'm hesitant to say that, no, we've, Panda Express has been. Working on this site since before I was hired while I was still in college. So it's been a long time coming. They're clearly very interested in this site. They want to make it work. I know I've kind of discussed some options as far as. Cutting down the numbers if we could, but utilizing, leaving that space in case something were to happen. And there was an overflow and as was pointed out, there is literally nowhere for access parking to go. You know, if we had a night rush and there was a bus full of, you know, kids coming back from a softball game. And they were taking up, you know, eight spaces with that bus. You know, just kind of a situation there. So they're very flexible. They like, they want to get this done. But, I mean, if you've seen the plan, there has been, they have scaled it back to what they need. Quite a bit already. We're really not maximizing the site. So they do believe that these would be necessary and beneficial. But they would be open to working something out.
Now, now the question becomes procedural. Do I withdraw my motion? Or do I, do we go ahead and, it's been seconded, or do we go ahead and vote? What?
Yeah, you'd have to withdraw it. Because it's on the table.
Well, you could call for the question, you know, and have a vote on it, or you can withdraw your motion. We got a motion and a second on the floor. So I can withdraw or should we just vote?
I would just withdraw.
I will withdraw that motion.
Okay, sounds good. And is it okay with the second? Okay, awesome, thank you. So would anybody like to make a motion to approve it as presented? Okay, Councilmember Becker and seconded by Councilmember Ward. Okay, Madam Kirk, would you please call the roll?
Councilmember Bolin?
Yes.
Councilmember Montney?
Yes.
Councilmember Imig?
Yes.
Councilmember Becker? Councilmember Correa? Councilmember Ward?
Aye.
Councilmember Crable?
Yes.
Councilmember Crumpler?
Yes.
Okay, thank you. The item passes. There are no nays to announce. And moving on to, and thank you for providing additional information. That was very helpful. So we are moving on to item 7D. And was that Councilmember Crebo?
Yes, it was. Thank you, Mayor. I just wanted to ask, so with the $70,000, do we know? Basically, how many abandoned homes are going to be able to renovate or sell? Sorry, I'm looking at emails.
So in the last couple rounds, it looks like we've been supporting about 35 properties around the city.
And this just helps with that process, right?
Yes, it just helps us continue.
Okay.
Continue the program, yes.
And we had exchanged emails some time ago that you had estimated there might be 370 plus vacant abandoned properties in the Bloomington area.
Yeah, I, yeah, I've not looked at those numbers recently, so if, yeah, I'd have to go back and look at that if we've.
So if we had more money, we could do more renovations in addition to the, the ones we're currently doing.
Correct.
And I know we talked about some type of a land trust or something like that that maybe could help with our affordable housing issues.
Yeah, I believe that may have been a conversation in the past, yes.
Okay, yeah, I'd like to have further discussion on that at some point.
Okay.
I'll go ahead and move to approve.
Okay, sounds good. Seconded by Councilmember Montney. Madam Kirk, could you please call the roll?
Councilmember Bolin?
Yes.
Councilmember Montney?
Yes.
Councilmember Imig?
Yes.
Councilmember Becker?
Yes.
Councilmember Correa? Councilmember Ward?
Aye.
Councilmember Crable?
Yes.
Councilmember Crumpler?
Yes.
Okay, thank you. The item passes. No nays to announce. Next item is 7E, Councilmember Crebo.
Thank you, Mayor. This is for the Zoo Project. And just wanted to. Let's see, it's the Zoo Anteater Bush Dog and Tortoise Exhibit Budget. Just wanted to confirm that no city funds will be used for this. I think that's what it appears to me. Is that correct?
That is correct. There will not be.
I move to approve.
Okay. Seconded by Councilmember Becker. Madam Kirk, could you please call the roll?
Councilmember Bolin?
Yes.
Councilmember Montney?
Yes.
Councilmember Imig?
Yes.
Councilmember Becker?
Yes.
Councilmember Correa? Councilmember Ward?
Aye.
Councilmember Crable?
Yes.
Councilmember Crumpler?
Yes.
Okay, thank you. The item passes. There are no nays to announce. Somebody's off the hot seat, Eric. Got all dressed up with his tie and everything. Okay, so we're going to go ahead and move on to the regular agenda. And with item 8A, consideration action on an ordinance, amending ordinance 2014-111. Discussing an intergovernmental agreement regarding the enterprise zone. And I'm going to go ahead and turn it over to City Manager Gleason before our presenters.
Thank you, Mayor and Council. This was a presentation that the CEO of the Economic Development Corporation, Patrick Hoven. Presented back to the previous council in February. The newly seated council members, he met in a meeting with them to bring them up to speed. This is an exciting topic tonight. Very much the same discussion as occurred on the floor of City Hall in February. But there's five total entities that are involved in making this change. And basically, and I'm going to give the floor to Patrick. But basically, what this does is it expands the tools that he has in his toolbox when he is marketing this region. It's critical. And it's also something that was actually already in place. Patrick stepped into this position a couple of years ago. Two things that I heard out of him was this topic and improving workforce. And he's been chipping away at both since the day he arrived in our community. So Patrick, if you wouldn't mind stepping up to the podium and walking us through this. I know you've done this a couple of months ago, but. Floor is yours.
Thank you. It's good to see everybody in person again. It's hard to believe that it's almost two years ago. We actually had a joint council when we first mentioned this concept on. How nice it would be if we had one standardized incentive, one set of rules for everybody instead of customizing all of our deals individually. And the reason to do this, why it's so important, is it really comes down to time. It's time and efficiency. Right now, RFPs come in, request for proposals, whether it's from the state, whether it's from a site selector. We're in competition, not just regionally, but also against other states. And there's always questions on there that ask what kind of incentives that we have. And they always want to know, you know, how much, how much is the incentive? Who has to approve it and how long does it take? Right now, it's not very much fun to fill that out because we can do sales tax exemption if you're in the zone immediately. A property tax abatement, I say six months to a year. We have to go talk to a lot of elected officials. As far as approval goes, there's probably five to six taxing bodies that have to approve it. If the standardized incentive is put into place, you guys approve this now. This is a set of rules going forward for the life of the zone, which is a 15-year zone. So the concept is, is that if it's a, a higher impact business for five years, they'll get property tax abatement. If it's not a higher impact business, we've actually worked in a way that if they can show us that there's going to be more of an impact on our community. They'll get a bigger incentive. So a standard incentive would actually graduate down. So year one, you get 100% property tax abatement. Year two is 80%, 60%, 40%, then 20%. If they can prove to us that they're hiring local workers to build it, they'll get an extra 20%. If they can prove to us that local workers work there, another extra 20%. If they can prove that they're hiring above for women and minority for that occupation, another 20%. And last but not least, if they partner with our school districts and create an apprenticeship program with either the high school or maybe nice stated both with community college. It's a really good way for experience-based learning to get these kids into one of these new projects. So the concept with this is take something that was already approved that's there, but makes it approved right across the bat. So that our enterprise zone board, which we're going to create an advisory board, could actually approve this in two weeks. And all they're doing is auditing the rules that you're setting up right now that we're proposing these changes. So my goal is to be able to go in and say, you know, we can do this in two weeks. There's one body and here are the rules. And the rules are outlined in here. It's five-year property tax abatement. But this really brings us up to par to some of our surrounding communities. But I think it's a way that we can stay in the game longer with these RFPs than what we currently are. Because sometimes, we always call it site selection, but if you talk to a site selector, it's site elimination. So we're trying to stay in, like, I don't want to have a reason to get eliminated. And right now, there's other communities, other states that are offering cash and we're offering tax breaks. So to compete, we'd like to have one set of rules, one coupon. So whenever you go to checkout, everybody knows and we can all sell it. But right now, if you go up to a drive-through, you have to get five managers to say, yes, I'm going to give you that 20% off. So if we get this done, it's one set of rules for everybody. That'll answer any questions. Also, thanks to the staff and the attorneys, we've been working on this thing for at least eight months back and forth. It's been a team effort between the county, the town, the city, across the board, state's attorney, the state and consultants. It's been quite the task to get here, so thank you, everybody.
Awesome. Thank you, Patrick. Questions from the council? Councilmember Bolin?
Always questions. Thank you for the presentation and all the work you've done. I really liked the standardization. But previously, the enterprise zone used sales tax for construction material. And now we're moving to all property tax.
This is, this is an addition. So the sales tax exemption on the building materials, this is a state program. So that's already included in the state's portion of this.
Okay.
The, the local abatement is just our portion of it. So the sales tax exemption is something that all enterprise zones across the state.
Okay, so the state, the sales tax is based on the state sales tax, right?
It's everybody's sales.
Oh, okay.
But that's, that's already in place across.
Okay. I guess then the next question is, when you talk about property taxes, is it the property, the. Property tax levied by the city or the entire property tax?
It's, it's for the city for this one than anyone else who wants to participate. So if the five units of government that are the designated units of government all participate and we change this, any other unit of government can participate. So the airport, the school districts, anyone that wants to jump on board, it makes it a better deal. So the airport, the school districts, anyone that wants to jump on board, it makes it a better deal for the developer. But right now, all we're approving is the cities.
Okay, cuz my concern is, you know, property tax for school, we already have TIF that affects that, but I like this short-term, you know, unified approach. My, my concern was just property tax. And if it's the cities only that we're approving, then I would be okay with that. So thank you.
Districts to participate. And also, this is only on new increment. So if it's vacant ground, they continue to pay what's already there. Any value added, that's what the abatement's on. It's not on what's existing. So it's money that doesn't exist.
Okay. Councilmember Ward?
Yeah, thank you for this. I also am a fan of standardizing and sort of leveling the playing field for people. I appreciate that. I do have a couple of questions. And the first one has, I'm hoping that you can just point to a couple of places in the ordinance where I can, where I can see this with my own eyes. First off, where in the ordinance might we find some really concrete assurances that local trades and contractors have priority on the tax incentive, new construction and rehabilitation? And then the second question has to do with, you know, how, how developers are being held accountable and how can we ensure that they are actually following through on the promises that they're ma- making? The reason I'm asking this is because too often, when developers come to the city seeking incentives, the first item that is mentioned is how many new permanent jobs that employer is, is potentially bringing. Little thought is given to the immediate economic impact for local businesses and construction trades workers in the project. Developers come with promises to employ locally, but in too many instances, they give the work to out-of-town contractors who bring an out-of-town workforce. This not only deprives local people of economic opportunity, but it also robs the local economy and the tax bases. Those construction dollars then leave our community and return home with the out-of-town workforce. Any economic development effort that includes tax dollars should include serious discussion from local government and the Economic Development Council on the importance of hiring and building locally. This will send a strong message to developers that our community expects the maximum return on any tax incentive granted. So I, if you could just point to the ordinance and, and show me where those things are happening, I would really appreciate it.
So Section J says local labor requirements. That's where they're required to actually produce a local labor utilization plan to make sure that local labor, which is outlined as any worker whose primary residence is located within the local labor market area as established by the Bloomington Normal Enterprise Zone. So because we are with Ford County and McLean County, that's anyone that lives in either one of those counties. So you have to prove that they're hiring from within that area to build it.
And, and what standards are we, we, I mean, who, who, who's policing that basically?
Who's? That's, that's me as the administrator.
Like, how do you do that? How do you ensure that?
So that's, it's similar to what we're doing now with the other incentives that are underway. So I have to do an audit every single year. Rivian has to prove to me that they've hired and met the, the hiring, the overall numbers that they have to meet, which they totally exceeded and blown away. They also have to prove that they've invested a certain amount of money. So every year, I do the audit. And now we're adding a board to go with it, so it's not just on me. So our entire board, which includes the two representatives from this entity, along with the town, the city, Gibson City, Ford County, and the other 12 private entities. So they perform the audit, which meet the requirements that are outlined here.
Does it include anybody from local labor?
Yes. Byuna's on our board. Tony Penn.
Okay. But involved in that audit is what I'm, I'm asking.
So our board is the Enterprise Zone Board plus Gibson City and Ford County. So yes, Tony is on there. Which we work very closely with Tony on this.
I'd just like to make that a, a top priority, that that continues.
And I think out of the 2,000 construction workers that are out there, Rivian, right now, quite a few of them are local. So they're.
Did they, were they local, like, for a long, long time ago or just recently local?
No, they're local across the board. Yeah, that's, there's a ton of them.
Okay.
Out of 2,000. So I'd say at least 80%.
The old Bloomington Junior High School, other projects like that, I've, I've heard concerns raised about.
Not a commercial business, I didn't do that.
I, I get that, but you see, the, the point is that it's a, it's an issue that concerns people. Thank you.
Sounds like City Manager just had something to say.
I just was gonna add, Alderwoman Ward and to the rest of the council. When Patrick has presented this originally and, you know, the, the follow-ups to the executive board for the EDC, that was a priority of his, was the relationship with the local unions, cuz he's heard the very same stories. So that's one of the things that Patrick did right out of the gate was to meet with the local union leadership, and he's, and he's done that.
Thank you. Councilmember Ward?
Sorry. Nope.
I'm done.
Ime.
It's like at the dinner table, when you're at a long table and you can't really see people.
I know.
Thank you for those, those questions, Alderwoman Ward, and thank you for your presentation. I just wanna follow up a little bit more. I, I believe that what you're referring to is, is A, I mean, not AI, the local labor requirements in the document? Didn't have, I didn't.
So it depends on which one, because.
Oh, fair enough.
Designate ordinance and the IGA.
Okay.
So an IGA, it's J.
All right, so I'm looking at I, two, where it says the zone administrator can weigh the requirement for a local labor plan if the grantee can show that any or all of the following conditions apply?
Oh, yes.
Right, okay. And it, and one of those, B is an awarded bid to a lower-cost resource provider requires the use of non-local labor in order to meet the bid requirements. So if you could shed some light on that, and along with the, the same questions and concerns that I've.
I don't wanna name, like, certain retailers, but there's certain retailers that they use their own crews to go around. That's all they do. That's, there's some major chains out there. They just stamp these things out everywhere. So for them to say, this is our technique, our practice, they would not qualify. Or if they're using equipment from overseas that are coming in that we actually don't know how to use here in America, cuz we do have some foreign investments coming in.
Right, well, yeah, that, that, and A, kind of, required skilled resources are not sufficiently available locally. That makes sense to me. And I just wanted to, to get some clarity on that because it, it occurred to me that that loophole could be easier to get through perhaps than not. But what you're telling me is that it's a, it's a particular kind of, of laborer or worker who would fall into that category and get this exemption.
They'd have to make a pretty significant case to get by, I think, our entire Enterprise Zone Board.
Okay, thank you.
Okay, Councilmember Crumpler?
Thank you, Mayor. Thank you, Councilwoman Ime. I had the same question, and I appreciate you asking that. I have a curiosity, and Patrick, thank you for your presentation. It's been a pleasure, you know, listening to this, to the, to the possibilities for our community that are out there. I wonder, in Section E, there's a list of exclusions. One of the exclusions is residential development. Does that include affordable housing?
Yeah, it's just all residential across the board. So yeah.
Okay.
This is geared towards commercial projects, so that's why they excluded residential.
So when you say they, that was the decision of?
All the attorneys, the consultants, yeah, across the board.
Just curious.
I think that was included in the original one that was passed in 16 as well.
Okay. The other one I have is about, and this is actually in Section 13, and it mentions, excuse me, you as the zone administrator will monitor performance of grantee annually. And I'm wondering, is that enough? For example, why not biannually? In this way, the zone administrator could determine if a grantee was, not to, not to increase work for you, Patrick, you know. No, but I mean, seriously, I mean, if you, if you wanna think about performance evaluation as something that could identify people who are not on track, you know, or perhaps not, not meeting the expectations that the community has. This would be an opportunity for you to intervene with that company and say, hey, we noticed that this is going on, this, this is what we expect and you're not meeting it. To use performance evaluation, both formatively as well as sumitively, just a, just a suggestion.
So, so right now, currently, whenever the projects come in, it's normally around January, February, I start doing the audits themselves and keep everything under lock and key at the EDC. So to go in, it really, I mean, I guess it's possible, but it is just more work. It's just a matter of letting, cuz if they don't meet the requirements, there was one year Rivian didn't meet the requirements, so they didn't get the abatement. So it's like, yeah, by the end of the year, the way that it's written, they have to prove that they've done the work. And if they haven't, then the abatement's not, I will not write you a letter saying they met the requirement.
So the annual performance evaluation fits with the cycle of the business itself? Is that what you're saying?
Well, that, and it's just a lot easier to do it once in January to say, did you make the investment? Actually, I shouldn't say that because the investment is tracked every time they pull a building permit. So I definitely have that. As far as the full-time workers, a lot of times that's on there as well. So it could be possible. And I could notify them, like, hey, you guys are not lining up to meet this. Maybe they could. But it's not like they would go up and come down, because if they didn't, then they wouldn't get the abatement anyway.
I understand.
Yeah. So I guess it is in there in a way.
All right, thanks.
Okay, sounds good. Thank you. It looks like we have no other questions. So is there a motion to approve this as presented? Or did we have a motion already?
I'll make the motion to approve.
Okay, by Councilmember Bolen?
I'll second.
Second by Councilmember Crumpler. Okay, Madam Clerk, could you please call the rule?
Councilmember Bolen.
Yes.
Councilmember Motney.
Yes.
Councilmember Ime.
Yes.
Councilmember Becker.
Yes.
Councilmember Correo.
Yes.
Councilmember Ward.
Aye.
Councilmember Crable.
Yes.
Councilmember Crumpler.
Yes.
Okay, thank you. The item passes. There are no naes to announce. I love how we're doing. Sometimes we go low-tech, high-tech. We can do it all. Thank you. So next item on the agenda is item eight B. Presentation of information regarding planned infrastructure projects and other initiatives related to the recent storm discussion. And we have none other than our City Manager Gleason presenting on this 10 minutes and 20 minutes council discussion. I'm gonna be very firm on the minutes.
I hope to get done in time. I'll yield some of my time to council. Thank you, Mayor and Council. This is, as a result of the storm discussion that we've been having at council meetings, committee as a whole since the storm event late June. And what I'm doing tonight, instead of packaging everything into the committee of the whole meeting in August, heard very clearly from council and the desire from the community that we take little bits every single meeting. So what I'm gonna do tonight is talk about all the different infrastructure projects that we actually have in the pipeline so that people can actually see the amount of money that is being spent over the next five years on infrastructure projects. And then also show what the funding source is. It's only a three or four-slide presentation. It'll be very quick. And depending on questions, at least the presentation will. And then what we're gonna do the next council meeting is we'll have a public works staff member or myself that is going to talk about the process. I've heard from the elected officials, the desire to understand what does that look like if we were to take a project, if we were to commit more money to some of these infrastructure projects, specifically the sewer projects, what does that look like? You know, can you take a project that's estimated or planned for seven years out, and can you turn that into something that we're doing a year from now? Well, I want everyone to fully understand, especially my elected officials, as they have very tough decisions before them. You know, what is the process? So that's not this meeting tonight or presentation tonight, but that's gonna be the presentation at the first council meeting in August. So here we go. Infrastructure. Do I still have you, Jen?
Yep, I'm here.
Okay. And I'm just gonna go ahead and tell everyone, my Uncle Bill's calling, as I've got Alderwoman Correo on the line, so I apologize for that, but it's the truth. All right. Yep, I did not connect with them because I would not get off the phone anytime soon. So, all right. The second slide, what, what I've got here on the far left, the categories show asphalt, the concrete, asphalt and concrete. That's our streets and our sidewalks. And what I want to show everyone is over the course of the next five years, starting this fiscal year '22 out to '26 only, we have $35,600,000 that's projected for these projects. And what is that? $1 million of that total amount is the pledge that previous council made, and it's been continued with this council, of $1 million towards sidewalks. And that was a 10-year plan, and we're in year six of that 10-year plan. So the other remaining $6-plus million truly is dedicated to the street work that we do in this community. The next item below that is state motor fuel, and that's streets. And what that is are those projects that we, that are state routes that we do in conjunction with IDOT approval, different than our local roads like the previous category. And what we have here is nearly a little bit more than $33 million total over the course of the next five years. The first year, you'll see in FY '22, a large sum, and that's because of the Fox Creek Bridge project that's projected. And that's something that can roll over into the next year if we don't construct it in '22. But it also involves the connection of Hamilton Street, Bund to Commerce. So that's why you see that large number in FY '22. And then project out other projects over the course of that five-year plan. Now we shift to water. One thing that I wanna share with water is this includes five years of a 20-year water master plan that's, you know, came before, those discussions came before council. That's $175 million project for this community. It's major. Our water resource is something that many communities would love to have that kind of resource, and we've got it through Lake Evergreen and through Lake Bloomington. But what we've got here is a little bit more than $60 million of that $175 million 20-year project on the water master plan. Sewer is the next category below that. And we have in FY '22, just shy of $6 million for this project. And then bearing numbers, you know, over the next five years, but just shy of $19 million is being expended on projects on sewer work. Stormwater. This is one, over the course of the next five years, we have just shy of $5.5 million being dedicated to those types of projects that are already in queue. And we also have the, the funding source to be able to complete these projects. And what you have is a total, there is $153 million, just shy of $154 million for this category, for these categories. I apologize. Next slide, please. I'm, there we go. And then just other projects that the city has in the pipeline. And both of these projects are in the design phase. O'Neill Pool, nearly a $12 million project. And the library remodel and expansion is a little bit more than a $20 million project. So that's 31, nearly $32 million for those two. And if we add it to the five different categories in the previous slide, we're pushing out just shy of $186 million in infrastructure projects for the city. And I share this, not trying to change course, not trying to talk anybody out of anything that may come as a result of the storm, but I'm trying to provide facts that we truly are in an infrastructure chapter in this community's history. There's been major investment in the past, and there's major investment going forward, which does not take away from the discussion that we'll have at some point. Do we shift? Do we reprioritize? That day's coming. Next slide, please. The funding sources. The locomotor fuel tax and home rule sales tax is what we use for those local street projects, the asphalt and concrete. Where I'm talking about the local roads and the sidewalks. And the home rule sales tax, typically, there's about two, a little bit more than $2 million every year that funds that $7-plus million in that previous slide that I shared with everybody. The next source of funding is the state motor tax and other grants for that second category that I mentioned that is in conjunction with IDOT that the city runs a lead on those construction projects. And then water fees and borrowing, this is an enterprise fund, and it's paid back by the fees that are held exclusively from the Water Enterprise Fund. Same story with sewer. Sewer is paid back by those fees. And then also stormwater fees and borrowing very similarly. And on those three categories, the water fees, the sewer fees, and the stormwater, those are typically loans. Actually, in this case, they are all loans that we have through the IEPA. Actually, in this case, they are all loans that we have through the IEP, the Illinois Emergency Protection Agency. And then the other two, the library and O'Neill Pool, that's general tax revenues. And then also with the library, typically funding the library comes out of the property tax bill, which is something that this council and previous councils have held, you know, very similar on our very small 15% portion of that total property tax bill. That typically is what funds library and library projects. But again, those two projects, the O'Neill Pool and the library expansion remodel, those are just in design phase right now to the tune of about $750,000 for each one of those projects. So those still will come before council for approval before we hit construction on both those projects. Next slide, or was that it? And then we should have had one more slide. Catherine was remiss in my question and answer slide. So there you go, Catherine. But Mayor, I'm going to turn it back over to you again. Just wanted to hit this very quickly, you know, as we're talking about this topic. And again, it's not my place as city manager to try to talk anyone out of anything, but it is my responsibility to provide the facts to my council before they make some very, consider some very critical things within the community. So this week was this, next week is going to be walking through what the process looks like. You know, this could be, you know, on any given sewer project, that could be a six-month internal process. Then it could turn into a consultant process for nine months as an average. It could be a year back and forth with the IEP to get approval from them. I want everybody to understand what that process and the timeframes typically look like as we start talking about reprioritizing and readjusting some of the things that are already in play. So Mayor, back to you.
Thank you very much, City Manager Gleason. That was very informative and definitely look forward to additional information. Is there, does anybody have questions for the city manager? Okay, Councilmember Becker.
So you, you put up numbers as an example, the sewer line on your slide, 5 million, 3 million, 2 million, whatever, whatever it specifically said. Do you have or can you have for the next meeting? What is included in, in each of those so that we know exactly what, what portion of, what portion of the phased project is already included and then what the capacity is? Can you, does that make sense?
It does make sense and I will do whatever directed. But I was going to speak more specifically to the different projects at the August Committee of the Whole. If you want me to tuck that into the process presentation that will be at the next council meeting, we will. We've got time.
I, I, I just want the data in that way so that I can look at it that way, whichever it's a week apart. It's not a big deal.
Thank you. Councilmember Crable.
Thank you, Mayor. Did those numbers include the, the loans with the Locus Colton project?
Yes, they do.
How much in, I don't think the slide showed how much in reserve we have in each of those enterprise funds?
They did not.
Okay. Do you know that off, those amounts?
I don't, but I can tuck that into the next presentation. I'll definitely get that.
Okay, because that may play a part in what extra, how much, how fast we can do things, you know, that type of thing. So we have to get approval for the CSOs, the combined sewer overflows. We have to get approval from the IEP, right? But if we're going to fix just the combined sewer system that isn't related to an overflow, do we have to get IEP approval for that?
That's something that I would confirm, but I would imagine so. I mean, we are under a, you know, even, even with all the events that occurred in the storm, you know, and, and, you know, IEP has approved the plan. So if we're going to change the plan, then I, I would imagine that we'll have to go back to the state for the approval. So also what's been laid out to the IEP, they're satisfied with. You know, they take into account whatever factors they might have, you know. You know, we talk about 100-year or 500-year storm event. Honestly, I think a better way to describe that is this is a fraction of a percent for a storm like this to ever occur in any given year. And I think tells a better story about, you know, how rare something like this was. But, and I'm, I'm getting sidetracked and I apologize, Alderman Crable, but I do believe IEP would have to be involved in any changing of the plan, even if it was to move up or.
I guess my assumption was, was not part of the plan. So that CSOs apply to making sure there's not an overflow into a body of water, right? And, and so you could fix some CS systems that don't impact that, right? And so if it's not impacting a waterway, I wonder if it's still part of the, maybe a better way to put it is, we, we have the Locus Colton plan, right, this whole, that whole plan. But that doesn't take care of all the CS, CS systems in the city, right? And so that may be outside the purview. And maybe we, we, you know, we could do things quicker, I guess, when I'm getting at it. If, if we, if those things don't have to necessarily be approved by the IEP.
Understand, apologize. I went down a different direction, but I'll get you that answer. And it's something that will be communicated to the community.
Okay.
Looks like we had another question, then, Councilmember Montney?
What's generally the lead time for approval from the IEP?
There's quite a bit of staff and consultant prep work before you go in front of the IEP. I'm not going to say it's a couple of years, but it's definitely more than a few months. It's, it's time consuming.
In the context of the slides that you provided and the line number one associated with the streets and sidewalks, there's a dependency there on the motor vehicle fuel tax. With that being a declining revenue source, are there thoughts about how to make up that shortfall to ensure that, you know, we're not left with a challenge in that arena?
Talking about the asphalt and concrete projects, definitely older woman Montney, it's, it is a concern of mine. And we actually lost revenues on the locomotor fuel tax this past year. Council was very gracious and, you know, used some of the reserve funds in order to meet the obligation, that seven-ish million dollar threshold that they promised the community. But going forward to your question, yes, that is a concern of mine.
I realize the public work staff has been super busy. So just putting it out there from the conversations back in May, at some point, I think it would also be helpful to have data of what percentage of our streets are rated at fair or below to kind of put that also into context as we look on the next five-year horizon for all of these major public works projects.
Yes.
Thank you.
Councilmember Ward.
Thank you. Um, I, a couple of my questions have already been answered. But one question that has to do with, with your presentation, City Manager, I'm just curious in the, in the future to know the impact on our street work if we have to then do sewer work. Because I, I guess I'm, I'm aware that, you know, we, we approved this budget to do a great deal of street work this year. I'm very happy about that. A lot of it was on the West Side. That makes my heart sing. And I'm just worried that we're going to have to dig all that up to deal with the sewer problems. And moving forward, can we, can we have some kind of a, a plan that addresses both of those in tandem rather than discreetly? Because I think the siloing creates potential for having to redo stuff. So that would be a request on my part and then I have a couple of other questions.
And that definitely is the, the approach, trying not to duplicate, duplicate efforts, create more work. But yes, that is the approach of public works.
Okay. And then I have a couple of questions that, that are not specifically related to what you presented. So if others have questions related to what you presented, I, I defer to them. But on the other hand, if I'm the only person, then, no, I see.
Well, it looks like we have a couple of questions here. Is it related to what he presented? Jeff? No, okay.
Yeah. I, I would like you to give the audience and maybe the entire council, the miles of sewer that we have under the city and also the miles of roadway that the city is responsible for because it is, it's amazing.
It is. And, and I don't have that answer, older woman Bowlin, but I will get that. You know, this is, when we talk about, well, when we talk about this city, this community being in an infrastructure chapter, it's, it's something that past councils, this council has made, you know, major commitment to improving a catch-up, if you will, post-recession. In 2008, 2009, projection on revenues prior to many of the staff was flat. And then with that projection of not, not having excess revenues, what gave? And some of the infrastructure projects gave, you know, let's say early 2010s to mid 20, you know, 2015, 2016 area. So this is an area that we're trying to play catch-up. I think we are. I also understand that that does not take away the pain of many of the community with the June storm. But that answer, you know, on the sewers and street total miles, I will get that as well.
Councilwoman Ema?
Thank you, Mayor. I, I have a related question to the, the presentation. We think about the five-year projection. Is it, and, and we think about the, the kind of sewer work in, that our public works will engage in. Is, is it fair to say that we're doing, we plan currently to do a lot more in the next five years than we have with the sewers? And will there be, given that it's been approved and slated and budgeted for, will there, there be demonstrable impact of these kinds of, of improvements? And I, and I, and related to that is thinking about those five-year projections as associated with neighborhoods, similarly to, to the way that we rate, so the road qualities. And we look at those data, you know, can we think about our, where in, in the community, those projects are attached?
We will provide that information at the August Committee of the Whole. I, I feel more comfortable saying, you know, I've been here three years as of last Friday. So this major emphasis on infrastructure, while I think it's increased over the last couple, three years, there, there has been a commitment over the last five, six, seven years. I think something that Public Works Director Kevin Cothe is going to share is some of the major projects that have occurred over the last 20, 30, 35 years in this community. You know, one example is a major improvements that have been made to Sugar Creek, that area that runs through our community. A lot of staff truly believe that the Carl Hospital Complex right here, just a little bit north of downtown, that entire area would have been a lake. And, and again, not taking away from the very real damages that occurred, but with this rare of a storm event, we are lucky that we did not have loss of life. You know, we, we are very fortunate. So there's a number of things that have been in place, past council, past staff get credit for. But I feel more comfortable, older woman Eaming, saying that over the last six, seven, eight years, we definitely have placed more of a priority and we have ramped that up. And going into the future, we're going to see even more.
Thank you. Councilmember Crumpler, is it related to this? Okay.
Thank you, City Manager Gleason. I appreciate the presentation this evening. Just, I, I understand, you know, that dealing with government agencies takes time and we, we want these, we want these projects to be done with integrity and quality. If there were additional resources, either, you know, from, from, from federal funds or, or moving funds around within what's in the city budget, would that possibly accelerate the time of getting some of these things done?
I think it will, Alderman Crumpler. And, and that's the, the next phase of this is, you know, sharing what that process would be. And, and don't quote me on this, please, especially you, Timothy, with the pantograph. But the, you know, if, if we've got, let's say, phase seven of Locus Colton, and let's say we're saying that that's eight years out. You know, what I want everyone to understand, when we're making decisions like this at some point in the future, is in that example, can we take phase seven and eight, combine that? But it's not going to turn into a project we're doing next year, but it could be a project that we're doing two and a half, three years from now instead of eight years out. So that's the kind of information I want to share next meeting.
Thank you. Appreciate that.
Okay, looks like somebody else has something related. Councilmember Montney?
I mean, just a snapshot in time, just looking back, it looks like in 2015, our proposed spending with sewer was 6 million. And in that context, that would not have been a year when we were executing on one of the phases of the combined sewer Locus Colton project. So I'm just sharing that as an observation and then thinking about the data as it's laid out for the future. I think it would be helpful if we delineate what of the sewer spending has been just general maintenance and just the normal running of the city, because there is some expenditure that would be fixed on that. And then side by side with that, what was the spend looking back five years and then looking proposed five years for actual project work to remedy the combined sewer overflow problems?
Understand, and that will definitely be a part of the future presentations.
Hey, Councilmember Ward.
And just to clarify, Councilmember Montney, when you just now said side by side with the combined sewer overflow, did you mean to say only overflow or were you wanting to say combined sewer at all?
Certainly all of it, but because we had specifically a project that has had an incredibly long time with large gaps where we weren't implementing the project, I think it would be helpful to see the project spend too. But no, I don't mean to exclude the other. But the project is something that was scoped in such a way that it should be easily, easily obtainable data reflecting back as well.
Thanks for that clarification. Um, so I just have a couple of questions that are coming to me from residents. And one has to do with the PMA, which is the, the, the company that's contracted to, to process our claims, right? I'm trying to get a sense of whether they have made contact physically, like they've actually gone out to look at all the residences that they're going to look at? Or is that still largely underway?
It's my understanding, and I'll confirm this, that the PMA letters started going out on Friday. I gotta believe that the remainder were sent today. And then the process, as I understand it, and I'll confirm this, that PMA is going to make personal contact with all of those that submitted a claim. But as far as being onsite, I do not believe that to be the case, but please let me confirm that as well.
Okay, because I guess I was confused about that piece. I, I had maybe misunderstood based on, on what I had heard that, that those claims had already all been looked into or the vast majority of them. And I've got at least two residents who have contacted me saying, we've gotten this initial phone call, but nobody's ever come to our house. So if you could clarify that, I would really appreciate that. And then, um, to also clarify the timetable for when they would start paying out if they were actually approved, people are asking about that and it would be really great to be able to say, are we talking weeks, months, years? You know, where, where is that? And then I think at last council meeting or the committee of the whole, I can't remember. Somebody was asking about what kind of insurance does the city have to pay for any claims that we are liable for? And is that, can you, can you clarify that or remind me?
Our liability coverage, let, let me, let me go back. And I, you know, I, I want to say something that, you know, I, I don't know that it will be a surprise, but I don't want to step over this and just sort of take the easy way out. And then everybody gets. And then everybody gets their letters on, you know, Friday or Monday. But in, and I've shared this with council in, in an email, the overwhelming majority of these claims are likely are, are going to be denied because the system is found to not be at fault, an act of God. Description on a rain event like this, but there are a small number where they are investigating and exploring those further. And I didn't want to skip over that, Alderwoman Ward, you know, I, I've got an opportunity to share that right now. And what does that mean next? We can cross that bridge as a community and see what the appetite of council is regarding a denial letter. But I think the community is going to see an overwhelming majority of those letters with a very small number that they are investigating further.
Thank you for your frankness on that. Um, I think we do, as a council, need to have more discussion of that topic. The last thing I'll say is that I've heard it mentioned a number of times, you know, hundred-year rain, thousand-year rain, whatever, how many decade rain. I think this underscores the issues of climate change. I don't think that this is just a fluke. I think that, that we're seeing this kind of thing around the world. And I think it underscores for me the need for us as a community to talk about sustainability and, and sustainable sources of, of energy for us as a city. And I'd really like to, to see that kind of good come out of this.
Thank you, Councilmember Crumpler.
Thank you, Mayor. Will there be any type of an appeal process for any claims that are denied? What are people's next steps?
I would imagine that there, there is, and I'll, I'll confirm exactly what those are. I'll communicate to council and share that with community. Could very easily be a press release, trying to keep everybody, you know, abreast of what their options are.
Okay, thank you.
Councilmember Bowlin?
Yes, would Alderman Creo like to make a comment?
I am actually paying attention, and we had it that she was to text me if she had any questions. But Alderwoman Creo, you, you've got a live mic if you wanted to make any comments.
No comment for me. I'm, I'm here though.
Thank you. Thank you. Okay. It doesn't look like we have any other questions, so thank you very much, City Manager Gleason. And we definitely look forward to the next chapter of this discussion. Very important conversation for the community and what we can do to address these issues. Next item on the agenda is our finance director's report. And do you want to tee this off?
Thank you, Mayor and Council. Scott Rathman, our finance director, at the end of the month, council meetings always says, finance director update. We continue to track well. That's not to suggest that there is not financial, negative financial COVID impacts. But as a community, we are doing well compared to many others. Scott?
Thank you, City Manager. And like last week, I don't mean to go backwards, but I will make one comment about the previous discussion, just briefly. Councilmember Becker, the, all the capital projects are included in the budget book. So if anyone wants to do any research before we issue further information related to the timeline, all those projects are detailed in book, book number two, in the capital project section, there's a, a future capital projects. There's detailed information sheets on each one. So they're, they're set up by year. So you don't have one for sewer that's going to show 22, 23, 24, 25, 26. So year 22, all the funds, year 23, all the funds. So just FYI on that. I'm sorry, sir.
Thank you for that. Obviously, we can go dig through and find that, but I'm pushing for it to be in a convenient, consumable form for the citizens of the, that aren't going to be able to go find that easily.
Agreed. I was just, if anybody wanted to do some, some pre-research prior to the next meeting, that's, that was the only reason behind that. Tonight, we will be reviewing FY 2021 one more time, recapping from last month, going through it relatively quickly. Next month, we'll, we'll resume kind of the normal financial directors report for the current fiscal year, really because of revenue backdating the way we receive those revenues in arrears. The, the revenues for 22 really have not begun to hit yet, so that's why we delay. There hasn't been any real material changes for FY 21. But we do have, I do have something I want to communicate to council. I've mentioned in the previous meetings related to the addition to reserves that we're potentially, we are looking at for 21. We're fortunate to be looking at additions to our reserves. And, and the, the suggestion the finance department would like to make related to FY 22 and a strategic goal that we've been discussing with council over the last couple of years related to the capital equipment lease. So next slide, please. So this is our major tax revenue. There, there hasn't been any material changes from last month. I really just wanted to highlight again some information related to the uptick in revenues that we're seeing in the last few months. I think that's probably, probably primarily being driven by the trillions of dollars in, in federal stimulus and the monetary policy of the Fed. So in, over in the far right-hand corner or column, you see the month-to-date variances versus budget. So to highlight the home rule sales tax and the state sales tax, you can see that we were 12.85%, nearly 13% over budget. That was $268,000 over budget and home rule sales tax for a single month. For state sales tax, we were almost 30% over budget. That's $370,000 over budget for a single month. So just between those two, we finished the year $638,000 over budget in those two categories. A very, very positive trajectory. We don't want to become reliant upon that. As I mentioned, I think that could be driven from the stimulus. But we also have within the home rule sales tax component, the legislative change that went into effect in January of 2021, where online retail, retailers need to start collecting the local component of sales tax and remitting that. So we are seeing an uptick, a substantial uptick in our home rule related to that activity. Down at the very bottom there, I put a note in there last month, just to highlight it again. The net general fund impact, net of local motor fuel tax, which is just a pass-through to the asphalt and concrete fund, was a $1.4 million decrease, and that was in effect completely offset by the local cure grant dollars we received last year of $3.2 million. So a very fortunate occurrence for the municipality, for the city, relates to the local cure dollars. Really offset our, the impact that we had on major tax revenues. But again, just to finalize, we've seen a very much, much of an uptick in our revenues at year end. Next slide, please. This is our revenue expense exhibit for our general fund. We've had, we had one change from prior month, the GMET program, that's the ambulance service Medicaid program that we applied for a couple of years ago in the fire department. It's, it's had a very, very positive impact on our revenues for ambulance services and the insurance adjustments. We did finally receive a final invoice. It's a revenue share with health and, health and family services with the state. We received an invoice just this past month for final 2020 calendar year, not fiscal year, but even calendar year. So they, they were very much in arrears and calculating those, those payables, and it was nearly $400,000. So our net surplus that we discussed last month, which was approximately 1.1, 1.2 million, has gone to, down to $700,000. Still very, very positive year-end total for the city, all things considered with COVID and the reductions in our revenues. But offsetting that was substantial reductions in some of our program expenditures related to parks, et cetera. So down at the bottom, it's very difficult to see, but I, I will walk through this or talk through this. We have $695,000 in surplus currently projected for the general fund. As add-backs to that surplus, we have certain expenses within the general fund that are being paid out of restricted fund balance, primarily the public safety pensions. So in a way, that's an add-back when we're, when we're looking at the math according to this layout. So a net surplus for the general fund, with some of those expenses being paid out of a restricted fund balance. So it doesn't have an impact on our unassigned fund balance, so it's an add-back on this, on this worksheet of 1.2 million nearly. And then at year end, as part of our audit process, we review all old purchase orders. So from a budgetary standpoint, we always include encumbrances, those are purchase orders, committed dollars in our, in our reviews. So we closed out 200, almost $295,000 of old purchase orders. So that's essentially, we're looking at a $2.2 million add, addition to our reserve balance. And we ended 20 with substantial reserves of $24.9 million. So with those, we're looking at a potential year-end fund balance reserve of 27.1 million. Now, GFOA recommends two months' worth of expenditure reserves on hand at all time. Our own, which is about 16.7% of your expenditure, expenditures for the annual year. We have a 10 to 15% fund balance, but I'm going to, I'm going to speak to the GFOA. So that would be about an $18 million, 18 to, 18 to $19 million targeted fund balance. So right now, we're looking at the $27.1 million ending fund balance for 2021. So our recommendation from the finance department, given the strategic goal that we've discussed with council regarding the capital equipment lease and weaning ourselves off financing our equipment purchases, is for 22 to bring forward a budget amendment for paying cash for all capital equipment. So that essentially, and I've reflected it here on the worksheet, instead of 27.1 billion going into 2022, I mean, we still go into 2022 with that number, but we approve this, we submit this budget amendment for equipment purchases, removing it from the capital lease and paying cash for it and saving the city hundreds of thousands of dollars. And it would be a major step in really forward progress, progress in eliminating the financing for our equipment totally. Because we were able to, to finance all equipment for 21 with cash because of, because primarily the local cure dollars that we got in the savings and costs. Next slide, please. This is a recap I, I put together last month, just that those numbers, they, they can get very busy. So really, what is the reconciliation for the year, for 2021? How did, how do we come out ahead? Well, our $2.3 million in reduction in tax revenues was completely offset and then some by the local pure dollars of 3.2 million. We had a $3 million, $3 million reduction in charges for services, so I'm kind of referencing the revenue component of our general fund exhibit. $3 million reduction in charges for services, offset by all the reductions in our expenditures. So parks, you know, if we, if we don't open our pools, we actually save money. You know, it's an unfortunate thing that we had to keep our pools closed, but the city actually saved money related to that. So we had substantial savings in our expenditures and our, and our compensation came in under budget again. This allowed us the positive impacts. It, it allowed us to pay cash for our equipment last year in 2021. And we had dollars available to transfer to the arena for the pending rooftop replacements. And we had the $695,000 projected surplus. I, I put a note on here for the community and just to highlight that it came down from the last proposal or presentation that we did for council due to this 496 late invoice that we got from the state. And then again, just to recap, the FY 22, we'll be bringing forward a, a budget amendment for council's approval on the March 9th council meeting to do an amendment to pay cash for our capital equipment expenditures for the general fund and take a substantial step forward to eliminate the need, the reliance on capital equipment leasing for our, this is just for the general fund for our equipment purchases. Next slide, please. So that completed 21. I went through it quickly. Next month, as I mentioned, we'll be going to a regular format for the current fiscal year. But I wanted to highlight some of the revenue items that we've seen recently that really go to accentuate the, the fact that these, the trillion dollars of stimulus that the monetary policy and the Fed has put into play, it's really had a very substantial positive impact on the city. Next slide, please. So this is our home rule sales tracking worksheet. There's a substantial part of this worksheet that is not visible right now. We have over 15 years of monthly data that we use to budget the seasonality within the year. So you can see in the left column, you know, we have 22, almost $22.1 million budgeted for the, for the general fund. You can see the, how the months, there's seasonality in the months related to the holidays, et cetera. We do receive, we recognize these revenues two months in arrears, but there's actually a three-month delay between when the retail sale occurs and when the city actually receives the dollars. You can see that for May, we had budgeted 1.9 million. We've received almost 2.3 million. We're still getting deemed the 1.5% by the state for service fees. But even with that, we have a $373,000 monthly variance, very first month going into 22. So right out of the gate, we're seeing an uptick in our revenues, putting us in a good position. You know, we can't count on that. There, things are going to level out. I mentioned last week that we've seen statistics, you know, the gross domestic product growth in the first quarter was around 6.4%. Their projection to be around 9% or greater in Q2, but then it's going to come down afterwards. And we'll see that probably reflected in our tax revenues. Next slide, please. State sales tax, May, 1.2 million. We received almost 1.5 million, so $270,000 positive over, over budget for state sales tax. Now, we did take these revenue projections down slightly going into 22 due to the pandemic and, and you know, the assumption that there was going to be a residual impact, but very, very substantial positive numbers there to report. Next slide, please. Income tax. Income tax all through 21 consistently over budget. Many, many entities, companies are doing well during the pandemic, trucking, et cetera, big box stores. And we're seeing that in our income tax year-to-date. Next slide, please. Replacement tax. This is a form of income tax. The none, the months over on the left, that, that's a historical way of looking at, you know, the $276,000 budgeted was for activity in April, but it's, it's for this current fiscal year, so I don't want that to be confusing. But we receive only eight payments per year for replacement tax. But you can see that of the full $1.6 million we budgeted, we've received almost $1.3 million year-to-date. So we've received almost 78% of our total budget just in the first two payments for replacement tax. Next slide, please. Food and beverage, you know, a $4 million budget. It's a substantial budget for us. This one, this had, it's, it's difficult months last, last fiscal year due to mitigation efforts. But you can see for May, we were $81,000 over budget. Now, we did take this budget down for 2022, but still 25% overage shows quite the rebound locally here for the city. Next slide, please. And that ends the presentation for this evening. I'm sorry, I went quickly. Next month, as I mentioned, we will resume the, kind of the general format, format for FY 2022. I'll give any material updates for 21. And as I mentioned, you know, we've had, we're very fortunate to have solid reserves for the city. We're, we're going to be adding to those reserves for 2021. We want to proactively utilize those reserves to take kind of a step forward from a financial strategy standpoint for the city and apply that, those additional reserves that we're looking at adding to the capital lease for the coming year. Any questions?
Questions by council members? Okay, no, it was all crystal clear. Thank you. Awesome. Let's see here. Okay, next is our city manager's discussion.
Thank you, Mayor and Council. We'll do the slides that we have first. And we're going to run with, I, I think the community is aware of this. I know the council is. We've had a mentorship program the last couple of years, and it's grown. This past week, we had our public safety portion. So that's a mentee with one of the Bloomington Fire Department firefighters and just out there, you know, learning more about the fire service. Next slide, another one with the Bloomington Fire Department. And CPR training for the mentees. And this is something, it's not exclusive to, but this is a partnership with the Jewel Foundation here in our community. And this has grown over the past couple of years and having these young men in And having these young men and women around in the different departments, it really has been, you know, even probably even more rewarding for us as staff members than these guys participating in this. Next slide. Did we have one with the police department? All right, got it. Police Department was out there as well. PIO, the Public Information Officer, John Furman, was represented. And I think one of the Assistant Chiefs was out there as well. So just trying to take, you know, try to grow locally, to be quite honest, when we're talking about government jobs in general. But this was the public service, public safety portion of the mentee program. Next slide. I think we have a farmer's market slide. Here we go, Saturdays on the square. The, we had a show this past Saturday, was very well attended. I think it went well. You've got Rory with the Castle Theater. You've got Melissa Hahn and her team. Everybody saw on the proclamation earlier Samantha and Catherine that received that on behalf of city staff. They do a great job. And even with the rain this past Saturday, this was well-attended. It was a great event. And this is the next show coming up on July 31st. Next slide. Dog Days Downtown, this is our first Friday event, and that's coming up on August 6th, 5:00 p.m. to 8:00 p.m. Next slide. And Farmer's Market, these are well-attended. I try to attend all of these, and it's nice to see the vendors out there in the community come out and, you know, start as early, 7:00, 7:30 in the morning, and it runs until 12 o'clock. Next slide. And then real quick, going back to the mentee, and I mentioned the Jewel Foundation. It's not just Jewel Foundation. You've got the local chapter of the NAACP that's affiliated with this as well. So that's something that's going to grow, and it's bigger than, you know, the young adults having a job or placement with the city. It's an opportunity for the city staff to be a mentor for, you know, community members, albeit young community members, but consider city government as a possible career pathway. Something else that I wanted to share was an update on the storm. And hopefully, the folks that were in attendance will hear this or see this in press releases. But again, a reminder that in a disaster declaration setting, the local governments pass that up through county government and state of Illinois. So Chairman McIntyre with McLean County is the one that makes that formal declaration to AIMA, the Illinois Emergency Management Association, and then they pass it through FEMA. Well, it's very unlikely that we would have met that threshold, that formula that's required in the state of Illinois, because this is a disaster outside of Chicago and Cook County in its population base. We still did hit a threshold, and the chairman stood up the mark, the Multi-Agency Resource Center. The next step after that, we have received approval to have the small business loan. And the SBA will be something that was announced this afternoon by the county. We will start pushing that information out. What does that mean? For individuals and for small business, these are low-interest, long-term loans to help with the disaster that many suffered. May not rise to that level for those that have insurance, and we'll just find a way to pay that deductible. But this is for the above and beyond, or those that were uninsured. So here's the document. But this is definitely something that the county's pushing out. I'm sure the town will. But the city's going to be pushing this information out. And there's also times and dates where residents can reach out and get more information. So more to come. Thank you, Mayor.
Okay, thank you. Next item on the agenda is Mayor's Discussion. So I wanted to update everyone on the Ward Six upcoming vacancy. So I've been working with staff to put together a process to fill the vacancy. And, you know, barring any last-minute issues, I anticipate that we should be able to share that with the the public and the community tomorrow. Okay. The other thing that I wanted to mention is that I, I was reminded that we, we had set a date in a resolution. I think this is prior to this council being seated about a code of conduct. So staff has asked for a little bit more time to continue to to work on that. You know, they've been pulled in many directions, and I think it's only appropriate that we allow for them the time to 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 work on this a little bit further. So more to come at a later date. And this past weekend, I had an opportunity to attend a couple of groundbreakings for Habitat for Humanity, which was, it's always a lot of fun to be able to to attend those. It was for two families who happened to be from Congo. And so I thought that was really amazing for them to be able to avail themselves of the American dream. And they're very, very excited, you know, with the kids and everything. There's another one planned for August 14th. So if you have an opportunity to attend that, I would encourage you to do that. And I should mention that our our staff, you know, they've worked in conjunction with the city of Bloomington. So a great partnership to be able to to make that happen. And they're very complimentary of the city of Bloomington. So Melissa, kudos. And also Saturdays on the Square. I was there on Saturday night. So I, it definitely adds, you know, an additional layer of vibrancy to downtown. So I look forward to to more events like that, not just Saturdays on the Square, but more stuff happening downtown. So congratulations again, Melissa. This is like your meeting, that you guys are doing a great job with your your team. So definitely appreciate that. And now I'm going to turn it over to council members who may have a comment or not. Councilmember Bowlen?
Happy anniversary, Tim.
Yes, happy anniversary.
Happy.
Councilmember Crevel?
Sure, I just wanted to first mention, a constituent called me like, I think tomorrow they're they're having some of their flood damage removed through American Baptist Men Disaster Relief. And she, the leader of that, the coordinator, his name is Van Peters. And he said he was happy to help any up, one else in need, and wanted me to share at this meeting his phone number. He gave, I've talked to him personally, so that was fine. So it's, if you need help, it's 309-212-8797. And then if you don't get that number, just reach out to me and I'll provide it. He did not want me to put it on Facebook, and I will not do that. So the other thing that I'll mention is 31 years ago today, passage of the American Disability Act. So just think of things as they existed before before then and how much improved they are now. We still have a lot of work to do, but it's nice to see the progress that's been made.
Thank you, Councilmember Crevel. Councilmember Emig? Your light is up. Okay. Councilmember Correio?
Are you able to hear me?
Yes, we can hear you.
Thank you. Hi, yeah, I am looking forward to hearing about the process to fill the vacancy. I guess I do want to address some of the public comments that were made today. I do think that, you know, as I have mentioned to both the mayor and Tim, this is a really wonder, this, you know, getting this house is wonderful news for my family. And I'm, you know, very excited to be making this move. You know, although it is bittersweet because it means having to leave my seat. However, I, you know, even though this story has a happy ending for me, you know, it very easily could not have had. And I do think that that points to ways that we have to consider changing our rules or petitioning state officials to change the rules so that this doesn't happen to somebody else who is a tenant and can, you know, can end up losing their seat if they are, you know, they're displaced. And so I would really ask the mayor and Tim and my colleagues to consider taking action or at least beginning to do some exploratory work to see what the options are available to remedy that and to put safeguards in place for the future.
Okay, thank you. All right, we do not have any, we don't have an executive session. So is there a motion to adjourn?
I'll make that motion.
Okay, is there a second? Okay, all those in favor signify by saying aye. Okay, awesome. We are adjourned.